I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and participating. We would be expected to have more participation and at the end of the day, we look to get better as we move forward, but we would first like to do what is always necessary to do. The sister, she opened up in prayer and we have a diverse community that we all, that we represent. There's no one religious community, no one ethnic group that we all representing or calling this meeting for. We are all here to move forward on the issue. And the issue at hand requires us to be one community. So we would like to call Sister Rose Zina, she has some information that she'd like to share with the community.
Greens, first, I must say it's an honor, a blessing to have those who choose to put their hearts in the right place. Such a time as this has come. And fortunately for myself, I've been waiting for this time for a long time. You know, when you read and you live and the premonitions and certain things go on in your life and your community, and you see it as a young child, then you grow as a young woman, and then you grow to be a woman. And I say, wow, Lord, everything you said is what you say is. Today, what we're going through is not unfamiliar to us as a people. This is a commonplace for us. Why is it that? What is not so common is that we're not together like we should be. That's what's not so common. Harry Tomlin, many of us have traveled through many journeys and we were together. We loved each other, we held each other, we assisted each other. One wasn't above the other. We both had a common issue and that was the struggle. Today, we have a common issue, and that's the issue of injustice, our systems. What I call the systems, you have to understand, systems are the place people have met night and day just to plan and fight out your life. And if you only know that you are a number or a color on a map, already predestined, they know your future and they planned your dream. And they sold you a dream that you inherited. How many of us are aware of the American dream? How can the American dream do you? So I read and I lived and I realized that the American dream was gonna give me a good education, a house, and a life full of income and debt that I was gonna have to always pay. So I'm happy with my dream because I always got to figure out when I'm sixty, ninety, a hundred years old, how I'm gonna pay for these taxes coming out, because I paid it all. The American dream keeps me in debt to America. So, we are in debt in an injustice system. What I have to say to you all is, get a book out called The Mapping and Decline of St. Louis. You all can write it down because everything I'm gonna speak about is written. We have many psychologists, doctors, lawyers, who all have investigated the Book of Mapping and Decline of St. Louis. There's also another thing I want to speak about, which is the Team Four Plan. Team Four Plan has been implemented since the Civil Rights Movement, when the doors in the South Park, and you have the basic Dixie line, "You know you're in St. Louis." I love St. Louis. How many of you all love St. Louis? Right now, you may not say you love St. Louis, but St. Louis is a very historic place. It carries many roots, and it carries a lot of blood, my ancestors, and a lot of hard work. St. Louis has the greatest spirit over the whole of the nation. One thing I can say is, poor city. It's the poor city. You got Missouri, you got the Mississippi, you got water all around you. St. Louis is good for energy, food, water, everything you need is right here in St. Louis. Most of St. Louis is what? Underground. Have you been to the underground? You been to those old undergrounds where they got cities under there? They got offices, they run, I mean, meeting and greeting underneath, right underneath us. So, that didn't go away. So, the Team Four Plan was a plan to take flight. You know, they had something called a white flight. You know, when the Civil Rights Movement went over, it was like, oh, we gotta get out of here. So that's how seventy got built, and the highways got built so they could go their way. And at that time, the city of St. Louis had a lot of money. And anybody wonder what happened to all that money? That money was used to suburbanize the county, so I could build up houses for the flights. Because we gotta take flight. You black folks can eat for it. We don't know, we don't know where, because we beat them, we oppress them, we can't trust them. So, really, I'm looking between the whites and the blacks in America. It's the number one thing is distrust because of how we've been treating each other. So, right now, they at a point that they know what has happened in the past, and they're afraid of what can happen today. What fear is from implementing law that's gonna protect us all? The fear is that there's no law protect us. There's no law that protect us, and the unfortunate part is, we have not got a law with the judicial system. We have not been involved. We have said that it was excuses, and I pray for my people so much because of the ignorance and because of the plight that it would be against your life. What I'm about to speak now is to my people of St. Louis. I'm speaking to you because I cry for you, I cry for me. There's a plight against you. There's a plight that you don't make it. There's a plight that you don't succeed. That plight was designed to make you think you did it to yourself. That plight was designed to make you think that you stupid and you ain't gonna never be any good. It's written. From North St. Louis, you have the Skeeter that is the Berlin Wall in the Book of the Mapping and Decline. That wall was designed that those African-Americans on the other side, once they reached the Skeeter, they will be pulled over and discriminated against and harassed and told that they could not go this way if they did show proof of why they traveling this destination. It's almost like when you were by Fairground Park, where that being the Dog Park area, you couldn't go over in that area. It was awful, like you couldn't travel off of that side of National Bridge into Fairground Park. That's the Dog Park area. You have to know your history here to know what we're dealing with. This is now brand new to us as a people. What scares me is that we've been here this long, and what have we been doing? I mean, have we been so caught up in the dream or trying to get what Susan got or the Joneses got? That you don't understand who you are and whose you are and what has been designed against you? That was what, when I see us grinding and looting, that's anger, that's oppressive ways. That was expected. Why you think the National Guard came here two weeks ago? They already know how you gonna operate because they programmed you. You are programmed. And why don't you show them something different? Something different is love thyself, love each other, educate yourself on the laws and the systems that's designed to instill in you. This system has laws that will instill in you. You know, I can get away with murder if I follow the law. I can kill somebody long as I follow the law, I can do it and get away with it. I know many people who have had that. So, with that said, what do you know about the law? Living under the law means what? You need to know the law. It varies in every city and every state. So, the Mapping and Decline of St. Louis was designed to geographically dilapidate the housing market in the city of St. Louis. It's called the blight, blight. It's called blight, blight. B-L-I-G-H-T. How do you light a community? Well, if you don't invest, we're not gonna put money there. How do we get money out of a community? We're gonna get money because of the bad conditions. You know, Hood gives a lot of money. Hood gives many resources to the community. We got, we got steed money, did you know that? If you are black, you got a lot of money on your head and you don't even know it. That's the plan. Wherever you go, somebody making money on you. And the truth of it is, you just made the world rich. This is a rich nation because of you. Don't you not know, so you built the country, every quarter that comes in, don't y'all make money? We shop at the stores, we spend money like we don't have no sense. We don't budget, we don't plan, but we spend. Every country in this nation is rich because of us. Because we keep putting our money out of the community and not knowing that we spend money bringing it back. So that's how our community got lighted out. No one invested in our community and not even ourselves. And so, that's why now you see what they call the Team Four Plan in full effect. You have the market that is being taken down, the properties have been given over to be restored and rebuilt by Paul McKee, who has millions, he's owned sixty-five percent of North St. Louis for a very long time. He was what you call a slumlord, and then incorporated in different corporations. And then he rented it out to you without fixing it up. And then at the end of the day, when they went to statistics and went to give the GIS system to say how many people lived in his houses, they said it was none because we did not fill out our census. So, when you don't fill out your census, then they get money to tear down your community. So now Hood says, "We're gonna give you twenty million dollars for North St. Louis because it's in a dilapidated state." But you say, "Ain't nobody living there because we did not fill out our census." So what we have to start realizing is, our lack of involvement has put us in this situation. Our lack of involvement has caused our Michael Brown to happen. Our lack of getting involved, how do you effectively make change? Knowing yourself, loving yourself enough, getting along with one another, educate yourself. You don't have to go spend twenty thousand dollars to accomplish your education. Self-education, pick up a book and read it. All you have to do is read the Bible, tells you some things, it tell you this is happening, it tell you in the last day, a certain man gonna rise to a high power and reveal who the Antichrist is. What you think the Antichrist is? Someone who hates love. That's what the Antichrist to me is. Someone who hates the good of the common world. He gonna show the people that you don't care about you. Right now, you feel not caring about, right? You don't feel like anybody gets to care about you. So at the end of the day, Mapping and Decline was designed to take us and groups to North County and take over the state and incorporate the other race of non-us in there. The white generation is coming. One time you have a white person who walk College Avenue in Dilapidated Village in a two or three hundred thousand dollar house. Where you do that, that's where you deal with it, it happened in Decline. Team Four Plan is designed to move you out of the state and move you to North County. And doing it all in front of you, then you thinking you did it to yourself. The vacation, the welfare system, everything being shut down on you was designed. All of this is a part of the design. So I came in here today, and I stood by here today to say to you, educate yourself, know why you're protesting. You're protesting so you can have an equal wife and equal justice in your community. But how does it start? With you. Get involved. Vote for every election. Talk to your neighbors about the issues. Let's find a way to boycott and shop in each other's stores. Stop going to the stores where you taking your money out of the community. Shop with each other. Find a solution to unite and take our money and to invest and develop ourselves. And we will be effectively, effective in our protest. You protest by eliminating distress, by loving on each other and coming together and educating yourself. So I leave you with this. Please read The Mapping and Decline of St. Louis. And once you read that book, you will change your mind about the things that you are coming into today. And you will be a totally different person about who you are. So, I love you and I thank you for the opportunity to be before you.
I think the sister raised a lot of new points, and I think she also collaborated with the point that you made and some of those who spoke prior. I believe that there's a need to set up a system that would allow us to, first of all, be able to communicate and have one goal. And like the United States government is, is a setup in branches. One branch handles this particular area, this branch handles this particular area, we have fighters, and so forth. And it counterplays into what she was saying. We need to divide up into departments so that we can accomplish our goal collectively. And that way, everybody can be involved. That's why it was important for everybody to be involved in this meeting. This is why we called this meeting. We called this meeting this evening after asking the minister to allow us the opportunity to come together. We are all grieving, we're all grieving, and we're tired of not seeing progress. We're out here every day. Some of you, you know, you've been out here every single day. And that's, that's a lot to ask for when you're not getting paid under the table or whatever. But at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is bring our family together. What they're doing right now is they're dividing us based on our different organizations. They're in meetings, we're in meetings with the Department of Justice on a Tuesday. And tomorrow, maybe lost voices or in a meeting with those same individuals. And we haven't spoke with lost voices, so we don't know what they're meaning about. They don't know what we're meaning about. And had we had a command post, we wouldn't be able to be manipulated like that. They're quieting us all by making it appear to us that we are the organization that is, that's moving this thing along. And at the end of the day, we're accomplishing nothing. Their plan, and we don't know it, because we're being divided while they work on ways to further divide us. You're young, I'm old, we got division there. We gonna say this is about the youth. Not about the youth. Some of the elder brothers have dealt with this very top white. This is not an isolated group of people that are affected by this age group. We got a lot of work to do. We got to start with that court system that allow that prosecutor to do what he need. And we got to address people who would allow those who could come to the conclusion that they come to, to be accountable. Why don't you see them on, in the media? How could this happen? That's what we all like to ask ourselves. How could this happen? I work in a court system. I work for a law office. And all the time, I sit in the jury selection process and I watch black people exclude themselves from that process. And it's, you know, it hurts because at the end of the day, when you exclude yourself from that responsibility, what you do is you leave that individual who may or may not be innocent to have to deal with those same individuals that you read those posts in social media. These are the same individuals that take advantage of the opportunity to judge your innocent or possibly innocent brother. And you find out twenty or thirty years later that he didn't do it. I'm telling you what's going on for real. Y'all can mask this up if y'all want to, but when you find yourself in that situation, you'll think different about it. You'll look for somebody to come to your defense. Those brothers that came in the same church with us, that they accused of pipe bombs, imagine that. We know the character of them rough, but we know big well what they stood for. And ain't about no pipe bombs going up the arch. Imagine that. But they got a court thing down there. And if we don't stand with them and others like them who have been falsely accused, we can find our own cell in that same situation. A lot of brothers are right now filing 501(c)(13). They got some fight. They ain't gonna forget that the things, the protesting that you did and all the things that you said in the media, they know that if you ain't got money, probably reason behind that. And they know that if they give you money, that you're not gonna use it in the manner which is designed to be used. So what happens? You end up in the federal court system and spending that money in a manner which it was not designed. Go to Chicago and see what they did to the Air Lucas and Jeff Gordon and all those guys that did the same thing. Tell y'all what's going on. See, they don't like this new type of activist who can't be paid. They like the ones that they can make the phone call. And they separate themselves from the people that they actually are supposed to represent. The ones they like, the ones that they give the camera. And they make sure that everybody's familiar with them, so that they can create new leaders for us who don't represent us. We got to be accountable. We have work. We ain't playing, and they are. When you go out there, think about it, could be you. Is there anybody that have something they'd like to say?
I keep a rooty in head of the Universal African Leadership Organization, and one of the organizers for one of the coalitions called the Leadership Coalition for Justice, which come out of the Justice for Michael Brown Leadership Coalition. First of all, let me just compliment everybody that has, is here and has maintained yourself being here. Hit yourself with a round of applause. Let me just say a couple of the remarks going forward, and I appreciate the sisters who are saying going forward, because that's what it's all about, going forward. But in going forward, we also have to understand our history. And to that end, for those who saying that we need more knowledge, I totally agree. Because many new leadership is developing, and we have to be deal with the reality that some of you have not been in the movement or in a period of time. So if you don't be in the movement, you have to begin to do some actual studies. And I would recommend a couple of books that you ought to study right out. One being The Construction of Black Civilization by Chancellor Wiesel. Another great book is The Wretched of the Earth by Franz Fanon. Also, the opinions and philosophies on the Arnold Market for Side Guard. But past that, because you got the internet, you can go into just Google, you know, black history book, and begin to read, and challenge yourself, and those of you, for the young people, wherever young group that you get, partly a book study group, to read each month so that you can advance your consciousness. That's first and foremost. Secondly, there is psychological warfare that's being undertaken, and has been since we've been here for real in terms of a psychological onslaught onto our minds, try to keep us divided. But understand that the struggle for liberation of us as a people is a protracted struggle. And when I say protracted struggle, that means that you have to be in this. If you don't be in the struggle, you gotta be in the struggle for a lifetime. If you're not in here for a lifetime, understand that you gonna have differences with different folks. But past the differences, you gotta agree with some common objectives. Let me give you some common objectives that I would like for you to think about. One common objective, I think that when we talk about policing, we as a community need to embrace community control of the police department. And what I simply mean by that is that whatever community percentage of police officers should reflect the racial composition of the community in which they work. First, sixty-seven percent black, common sense says that sixty-seven percent of the police officers ought to be black. Common sense, common sense. It should not be, and shame on us, that the police force is fifty-three commission officers and only three are black. Shame on us. But again, that goes right to education. And then the other goal going forward, especially if you're gonna live within this country and pay taxes. Then we have to have another concept called proportionate political representation. What it mean by that, very similar to what I considered about community control of the police. Proportionate political representation simply means that whatever percentage we are on a national level in terms of number, they say we thirteen percent of the population. Statewide, whatever percentage we are. And locally, we should have that as political power. So you got a hundred, and then we pay taxes. So you need to study the political system. I mean, your work, that the people who make the laws that impact us. The United States Senate, United States House of Representatives. In the United States Senate, you have a hundred senators. I just told you that we thirteen percent of the population. Well, they got three black senators. That's way out of, that's, 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 that's out of balance. So we have to begin to think in terms of organizing for political power. And then we got to going forward, back locally. We got to, if we say the mirror of person is no good and has not done what he's supposed to, we gotta work on a recall. And then we gotta have somebody ready to stand up and be mayor, as well as the council. That's moving forward, moving forward. This system only understand, let's be real, that one of our struggles has to be a political struggle to address all of the marching. And by the way, just quick digress. I thank the Lord for last night and for many of the young people that I've seen in his writing in terms of closing down United States Party for, that was a good sale of a lot of law. And the other activities. You, don't, don't get into the mindset that we are not unified. We are unified to a greater extent, but just think, think of this in war. You got Army over here, Army B, you got Army C over here, Army D over here, all moving forward for the one objective. And I think all of us agree, we do have an objection. We want some justice. And so, with those armies, you just put together, if you belong to an organization, and not one organization will bring about that change. But the heads get together and move forward. Finally, finally, economically. I said, you know, we did protest. Hundreds of protests have occurred, but they don't hear us. Are they heroes, I take that back? But they don't respect us because we have not asserted the kind of force that would bring about it. And we should going forward be saying that Nixon, you need to resign just on principle. On principle, because he had an opportunity to remove Bobby McCullough under the Emergency Law Act as the prosecutor, replace him with another prosecutor, and as a Democrat, just not vote, he said, "The hell with us." We can't forget that. You cannot forget that. Moving forward, we all, Black America has a one trillion dollar spending power. Can you imagine if all of a sudden, not just here in St. Louis, but all across this country, we kept our money in our pocket? That's sending out a heavy, heavy, heavy message that of this, that collectively, we begin to affect some type of double member policy. So to that end, and I'll give you questions. To that end, our coalition is calling as a stepping stone, just going forward as one stepping stone forward for economic watercoff. This holiday season, starting Thursday, don't go and spend your own money unless it's with our own business, and I'm talking about black business. Black Friday, don't spend your own money because they count on that margin of profit to get over. But what if we stop spending? Black Fri-, I mean, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That's what we're advocating. And we pray that you support this, put it on that Twitter, all of, you know, the social media that you have. Maybe you should have this flyer, that's spread across the country. How can we celebrate the holiday season when they killing our children, when they disrespecting us? And that's the message that you gotta send. So I just wanted to make that comment as an elder. And I got one prayer as an elder. I pray to Almighty God that before I have my last breath, that our people are free. And we can be free, especially if we talk about, we believe in God, because God can make it happen. Especially if we talk about we believe in God, because God can make it happen. Ferguson, think about this. Ferguson, St. Louis is the epic center for Black Americans. You are leader, but if you don't feel leader, instill yourself with some knowledge, for real knowledge. Instill yourself with strength and it'll be alright, yes, ma'am. Right. I can point to learn statistics. I mean, you were aware that black males are six percent of the United States population, yet seventy to eighty percent incarcerated. That's by design. And that's why I said we at war. And warfare takes the place, and I know you're ready. Warfare takes the place on several levels. When you at war, you out here trying to kill somebody, right? Our people are being murdered on the streets daily by the police. Am I right, ma'am? As well as we killing our civilians, that's a form of warfare. And warfare will take prison. Our young people are being incarcerated, those are the prisons. We have psychological, in warfare, we have psychological warfare trying to confuse your opposition. The confusion is how they frame the narrative of our struggle to keep us confused. So you gotta understand that. And again, the key to it all is that you individually instill yourself with the kind of knowledge I just projected. Make a personal commitment that you'll stay in this a long time. Cause this is the ups and downs. I mean, I've been involved since I was eighteen, seventeen, sixty-seven. I used to think as a pastor, the revolution was right around the corner. I'm gray in the mud now. But I'm still, still saying it's going to happen in my lifetime, thank you.
That an organization that we, if everyone here is as an organization, you should be reaching out and finding out the other organizations. So like my brother Zaki said, that we should be coming together. Because if you're ahead of an organization and you have not reached out to find out what else is going on, shame on you. Because there are a lot of organizations that are collaborating. Even here as today, I have reached out to three or four other people to let them know what is happening with the young people. Again, the young people are the ones that, in the sixties, has led the movement in Birmingham, Montgomery. And our, our, our history tells us, it shows us, you don't know where you're coming from, you don't know where you're going. So again, though there was success that was happening back in our history, that we have to take on and understand in order so that we can continue to be successful and then continue to come up with new ideas and apply them with the old ideas. Because there is an organization right now, and I'm gonna give you information, it's called the Young Adult Coalition United through Perry Store Universities. And Hands Up United, Collegiate One Hundred, HSSU, NAACP, the Urban League Young Professionals, the Williams, the YCC and the Lost Voices have now come together and they are going to take legislation to Jeff City. And that is going to happen in January. NAACP is doing a seven-day march and Coalition as well headed to Jeff, headed to the Governor's Mansion. And I believe that everyone in here should join in, going to the Governor's Mansion at some point for that seven-day march. It is resemblance of the march from Montgomery, from Selma to Montgomery. Okay, so it's very important that we participate so that we can continue this. Everybody wants to know, where do we go from here? See, we gotta take it and continue the pressure on the street with nonviolent protests. And then we have to also take it to the next level, which is legislation. Because we can't make change without the legislation. We know where the power is, we have to get there and come up. And these young people have come up with demands that we heard of. Brothers, I hear everyone in here has mentioned about body cameras. We talked about body cameras, they got legislation that they're putting together, bringing up Becky Thompson's old legislation that got put down years ago. We want to push that back out again. They're also talking of changing, doing selective policing, employment, increasing the number of minorities on local municipal police departments, local municipality departments. Should be made up of, they said forty percent, but it should be, like you said, Akei. What's that population in that municipality? They're also talking about increasing state funding and resources for job readiness and getting those type of things still. And let's see, they want significant decrease in racial profiling on municipal police department. And establish a civilian police review board on these local. And basically, this is all of our youth, our young people have come up with this, not the adults. So we're gonna allow the youth to take us and come together. And we as adults and older generation need to come and support. I know we supporting on the front lines, but you know what? We need to let them have their voice in Capitol and Jeff City. We're gonna do a hearing in Jeff City come in January. We're pulling them from Kansas City, Missouri, we're pulling them from Columbia, Jeff City, down in Bull Hill. Because it's not just the persuasion. And we also have Democratic and Republican sponsor that's gonna sponsor the bill. We can't go wrong. So again, if you don't know of an organization and you'd like to join in this organization of collaboration of people, we're welcoming them all. So information will be coming out. If you're not a part of this organization or coalition and you would like your organization, please see me. I'll add you to the list and let everyone know. With that, yes? Yes, NAACP, Urban League, we're all pulling together, having buses at different locations for people to ride up to Jeff City. We're gonna carousel them up to Jeff City, anywhere we can get there, advance. So it's very important, again, participate. And we have to participate in our democracy, in the democracy. We say other people, for the people and by the people. We can make the changes, we just have to come together. So if you don't know, if you know of an organization, you wanna know about it, you can see me afterwards or during and I'll take your information. Again, I just wanna thank everybody for, we need to make sure that we have that structure in place and we keep it nonviolent. What we're gonna also do is train in the philosophy of nonviolence so that people will understand what is nonviolent? What does it look like? Okay? Thank you. I think your brother has a very interesting point and we need, we need wisdom like that. Because believe it or not, that type of energy, spark energy in other people. So, you know, this is the time that we share what we have so that we can come up with what we need. I'd like to bring your sister to the table.
Amen. New York.
Hi everybody. My name is Dr. Lenora Fuwani. I'm a political independent, I'm a developmental psychologist and I'm an activist. And I've been on the streets for the last thirty-plus years. I've worked with every organization that I've worked with, the Farrakhan. I've marched for years with Urban Sharpton. And I've worked to build organizations so that our young people and our people have some choice. As far as I'm concerned, we have failed
Amen.
adults with all of our core knowledge to help create a world where you all are safe, where you can go to schools that work, the schools that are a disgrace in this country. They don't teach our kids. And then they say we can't go to college because we don't know science, but they don't even have science course. Last night I was nine hundred and I watched what we have in here, I was in New York City. I got up this morning, I called two of my colleagues and I got on a plane because I wanted to come here for you all. I wanna be there, I want to support the energy. You have every reason to be helping. Our communities are poor, everybody talks about this thing or the other. The two-party system in this country doesn't work. The Democratic Party talks a lot of stuff, they don't come through. The reason why you all are out there is because you can put it in a way that captures everything that's going wrong. You know that this country isn't working for you. So there's lots of stuff to be done. I just wanna thank you for taking the risk. And thank you for standing up and demanding something from this country. And to the degree that I can, I got your back, I give my cards.
Amen.
And here lots of people out there in this room who deeply love you and who are concerned about what's happening to yours. And we owe you some stuff because with all our rights, you just have not come here. So take care of yourselves and I'm gonna leave your place normally and I'll come back. Thank you.
Give her a round of applause, you know, when you're in New York.
I naturally, when I met the president, I ran twice. I was the first white woman to get on the ballot in all fifty states. And I didn't run to win, I campaigned to build power. And that's what it means.
Before, before everybody, your brother actually made some, some interesting, interesting point. Like in making sure that we share the information, organization to organization so that we can at least start to be on the same path as far as communicating with one another and knowing what the other army, as he described, is doing. But definitely, in the future, I hope that we have a more supportive turnout so that we can possibly identify those among us who we can, you know, mold to be for us and stand for us. And if we could take the example of the president, for example. The president doesn't know everything that he needs to know in order to maintain that office. What he has is advisors, they go into different areas and they study in different areas. And they drop that wisdom on the president and they mold him into what he needs to be. We have to incorporate that. We have to do what we need to do to move forward. And it may be different from what has been in the past. But we definitely gotta find a way to address the issues that are at hand. There was a, somebody briefly spoke on the prison system and I don't believe a lot of people understand the prison system and how they work and why they work in the manner in which they do. But the prisons, we have to understand are developing factors that produce different things that we find in the common store. And the Constitution of the United States says that we can't be paid under the minimum wage unless we break the law. You'd be surprised how many at all that we call our representatives, our politicians, our judges, our lawyers, our doctors, who have invested in some of these industries that exist within our prison system. You'd be surprised who has invested in private prisons. So we have to be careful of who our representatives turn out to be and keep them accountable.